I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. This is the fourth of five public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for renewal leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1, 2018 through September 30, 2019.
Should we turn that that way? Oh, no, maybe that's for speakers. Can you not hear at all?
Can you hear?
[Inaudible]
Okay, let me speak a little closer to the microphone. Is that better? Okay, great. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Hillary Botin?
Present.
Rodrigo Camarena is not here yet. Sheila Garcia?
Present.
Leah Goodridge? Is Leah here? She's here. Where is she? Okay, she's in the back. Angela Pinsky not here yet. David Reese not here yet. Scott Walsh?
Here.
Did I call you Cecilia?
No.
Sorry. And Kathleen Roberts, I'm present. Let the record show that we have a quorum. Okay, I need to make a few announcements. The next meeting of this board will be a public hearing on June 21st. This will be our last hearing to comment on the proposed guidelines. The hearing will take place at the Oberia D Dempsey Multi-Service Center Auditorium, 127 West 127th Street, New York, New York, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Spanish interpretation services will be available. Directions to this hearing can be found on our website, nyc.gov/rgb. Pre-registration to speak at this hearing has begun. You can sign up by calling the Rent Guidelines Board offices at (212) 669-7480, then press zero to register. For further information, see our website. And as always, there are copies of our meeting schedule here tonight. The final vote will take place here at Cooper Union on June 26, starting at 7:00 p.m. I'd like to thank you all for attending this public hearing. The board is looking forward to hearing from many of you regarding the proposed rent adjustment guidelines. Based upon testimony we've heard in previous years, we know that many of you here have concerns about housing conditions and various aspects of rent regulation that may be beyond the mandate of this board. In order to help address these concerns, we have here this evening, for the first time in the history of these hearings, representatives of the New York City Department of Housing, Preservation, and Development, also known as HPD, and the New York State Homes and Community Renewal, HCR, who are available to answer questions and provide advice. They are located in the lobby. The board very much appreciates their willingness to participate in these hearings. Before we proceed with testimony, I would like to go over the rules and procedures for those who are testifying before the board. If you wish to speak, you must confirm your presence with the RGB staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Excuse me, speaker registration ends at 8:00 p.m. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. There is a Spanish interpreter here today. When registering to speak, please notify the staff if you would like an interpreter. We also will have a Mandarin interpreter available today. I will try to call several names in advance. When your name is called, please come to the front of the auditorium toward the podium. If you have any materials to distribute to the board, you should give them to the RGB staff sitting at the sign-in table near the entrance. I will attempt to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. In order to accommodate as many speakers as possible, each speaker will have two minutes to give their testimony. An additional two minutes of speaking time will be given to those speakers utilizing interpretation services. To help speakers keep track of their time, we have a clock. We will start the clock when you begin speaking. The clock will beep once when the speaker has 30 seconds left and will continue beeping when the allotted two minutes are up. If you are still speaking at the end of two minutes, I will ask you to quickly wrap up your testimony. We expect many speakers, and the board wants to hear from as many speakers as possible in the limited time we have for this hearing. We understand that it may be difficult to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand that it is our responsibility to make sure that everyone who's taken the time to come here and testify will have a fair opportunity to be heard. We thank you in advance for your cooperation. Now, we need to get the Spanish interpretation of the announcements.
Me gustaría darles las bienvenidas a esta audiencia para la junta reguladora del alquiler de la ciudad de Nueva York. Este es la cuarta audiencia de cinco audiencias donde se están considerando comentarios que se están proponiendo para los ajustes del alquiler, para renovar contratos de apartamentos, apartamentos, lofts, hoteles, y viviendas de unidades que están cubiertas por la Ley de Estabilización del Alquiler del 1969, incluyendo la Acta del 1974, que es para la protección de emergencia para inquilinos. Estos ajustes van a impactar contratos que empiezan del 1er de agosto del 2018 hasta el 30 de septiembre 2019. También se leo la lista de asistencia, y hay quorum en este grupo. La próxima reunión de la junta va a ser una audiencia pública en el 21 de junio. Este va a ser nuestra última audiencia con comentarios sobre las reglas. La audiencia se va a llevar a cabo en el Oberia D Dempsey Multi-Service Center Auditorium en la 127 oeste de la calle 127, en Nueva York. Va a empezar de las 5 para las 8 de la noche, y va a haber servicios de interpretación La dirección para la audiencia se puede encontrar en el sitio de red nyc.gov/rgb. Se tiene que pre-register para hablar en esta audiencia. Se puede inscribir y llamar a la junta en sus oficinas en el número 212-669-7480. Oprimir el cero para inscribirse. Para más información, puede ir al sitio de red, y como siempre, hay copias de la programación de todas las reuniones aquí esta noche. El voto final se va a llevar a cabo el 26 de junio, empezando a las 7 de la noche. Me gustaría darles las gracias por asistir a esta audiencia pública. La junta está emocionada de escuchar sus comentarios de parte de muchos de ustedes para estos ajustes del alquiler. Basado en los testimonios que hemos escuchado de los años previos, sabemos que muchos de ustedes tienen preocupaciones sobre las condiciones de viviendas y varios aspectos de las regulaciones del alquiler que van más allá de lo que es el mandato de esta junta. Y para poder ayudar a lidiar con estas preocupaciones, tenemos esta noche aquí por primera vez en la historia de estas audiencias representantes del Departamento de la Preservación para la Vivienda y del Departamento de Desarrollo de Casas y Renovación Comunitaria, quienes van a estar disponibles para responder preguntas y proveer consejos. Ellos están en el lobby del edificio. La junta aprecia mucho el hecho de que están participando en esta audiencia. Antes de seguir con los testimonios, nos gustaría repasar algunas de las reglas y procedimientos para testificar ante la junta. Si desea hablar y dar testimonio, necesita confirmar su presencia con el personal de la junta, donde se están inscribiendo en la mesa localizada a la entrada de este salón. Las personas que quieren registrarse, el registro o la inscripción se termina a las 8 de la noche. Las personas no se les va a llamar, al menos que se hayan inscrito en la mesa de la entrada. Hay interpretación en español aquí disponible toda la noche, esta noche. Cuando se registra usted para dar su comentario, por favor, notifíquenle al personal que necesita intérprete. Voy a tratar de llamar un grupo de nombres por avanzado. Cuando usted escucha su nombre, por favor, venga al frente del auditorio. Si tienen materiales que distribuir a la junta, debería de dárselo al personal de la junta que están sentados donde se están inscribiendo a la entrada. Voy a tratar de alternar personas que dan comentarios entre los caseros y entre los inquilinos, pero esto no va a ser posible cada vez. Y para acomodar a todas las personas, cuanta gente pueda dar comentario, lo posible. Cada persona tiene dos minutos para dar su testimonio. Y también, y se le van a dar más tiempo a las personas que necesitan interpretación. Se le va a dar dos minutos más por la interpretación. Para que las personas que están dando sus comentarios mantengan la atención en el tiempo, tenemos un reloj al frente. Vamos a empezar el reloj cuando empiezan ustedes a dar su testimonio. El reloj va a hacer un sonido cuando tienen 30 segundos para terminar su comentario, y va a continuar sonando hasta que se termine el tiempo que usted tiene. Si todavía usted está hablando al final de los dos minutos, les voy a pedir que, por favor, terminen con su testimonio. Esperamos a muchas personas que van a presentar, y la junta quiere escuchar de cuanta gente sea posible, con el tiempo limitado que tenemos para estas audiencias. Entendemos de que va a ser un poco difícil de decir todo lo que uno quiere decir en solamente dos minutos, pero les pedimos que, por favor, entiendan de que es nuestra responsabilidad de asegurarnos que la gente que da su testimonio aquí tenga una oportunidad igual que a todas para ser escuchadas, y les damos gracias por su cooperación.
We're going to begin the testimony. As I mentioned earlier, we do have a Mandarin interpreter. Right now, the speakers who need a Mandarin interpreter are not here, so we're going to wait and have the Mandarin interpretation of the announcements when that group gets here. So, we're going to proceed with the testimony at this point. And the first three speakers are Susan Steinberg, Patrick Sekanolfi, and William Stanford.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm Susan Steinberg, president at Stuyvesant Town Peter Cooper Village Tenants Association, advocating for 28,000 residents. In 1947, our community was built for people of moderate means. And when I moved in in 1980, my one-bedroom cost $315. In 2018, despite rent regulations, that same bedroom starts at $3,156. Moderate? Even if I were still working, I couldn't afford to live in Stuyvesant Town now, and I couldn't afford any apartment in New York City. Most New York City landlords require renters to earn enough to pay no more than 30% of their income on rent. 30% is becoming a mythical number. I bet you remember the following formula: Rent should equal no more than a quarter of one's income. These days, the average renter now pays closer to 50% of income or more. That $3,156 bedroom I mentioned? At 30% of income, I would have had to earn $126,240 to afford it. I never came close. But New York City's 2017 average annual salary is $69,003, according to PayScale, a research group. So how did a rent-regulated community get from moderate to market? Well, RGB has contributed generously until recently, with increases on the extravagant side, even during the Great Recession. As tenants become increasingly rent-burdened, landlords make profits. The RGB's own 2018 income and expense study indicates that net operating income rose 4.4% in 12 consecutive years. If average renters got a 4.4% annual raise in income, they wouldn't be rent-burdened. I suspect most property owners don't worry from year to year about having a roof over their heads, but many New York tenants sure do. So let's keep some balance here and keep the increases low, even at 0%. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Thank you for being here. My name is Pat Sekanolfi. I'm the executive director of the Community Housing Improvement Program, whose 4,000 members own or manage approximately 500,000 units of rental housing in this city. Collectively, CHIP's members provide more affordable housing than NYCHA, Section 8, or Mitchell Lama. So let's look at the cost figure. Over the last 22 years, the board has authorized rent increases that cumulatively total 82%. But the price index of operating costs over that same 22-year period has cumulatively been 181%. So the guidelines have given a good deal less than half of what you have determined the actual cost increases are. And it's even worse if you look at the last five years. I mean, the last five years would be certainly something we can all remember. The last five years, the compounded rent increases granted by the board were 2 and 1/4%. The PIAC during the last five years was nearly 12%. So these numbers are way out of joint. In addition to that, over the last several years, the city council has enacted new unfunded mandates. And, you know, we made a list at CHIP to guide our members of how many of these new mandates there were. The list of new mandates ran 13 pages. And in the last year, there was 167% increase in new mandates from the city council. Now, we're not saying we disagree with any of these. A lot of them are good, solid public policy, but they cost money to deliver, and they cost money to implement in housing. And the board takes no note of any of that, and we think that's a serious problem. The next thing I'd like to mention has to do with net operating income. I make this every year. You don't include capital expenses and you don't include debt service in your net operating when you look at the health of the building, and so a building's health looks a lot more rosy than it really is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
To Carol, aka Kathy Roberts, the name is Mr. X. When will you ever get that right? When you'll ever get that right remains a mystery to me. And as I told you, in the last three years, it's unpractical to start public hands before 6:00 p.m., and you continuously ignore me. There's no saying goes, "Your hard head will give your soft behind." And to Andy Matt, Andrew McLaughlin, oh, he's the reason why we had to pass security checks here at 77th Street in the last 11 years. And as I stated, within the last five years, he told the cops to watch us. He also did the same again here earlier today. Why? I don't know. There's no, it was no need for you to send the cops after us. There was no need for us to pass a security check. It's nonsense. I don't know what you're doing. I don't find that amusing. It's time for you two to go. Okay? These tenants here need a rent rollback, not a rent freeze. That applies to those who signed a one-year lease, also those who signed a two-year lease. They need a rollback, not a rent freeze. Now, whether Carol has the balls to give, whether Carol will have the balls to give it to them remains, but I don't think she'll get them a rent freeze or rent rollback. I think she'll just turn our slack off with what she did in the last three years. Well, as I said before, it's time for you two to go. It's time for you two to move on. Okay? You need to give them a rent rollback. Forget the rent freeze, give them a rent rollback. And that applies, that applies to everyone, those who sign a one- or two-year lease. Okay? And Carol, if you're here next year, don't start public hands before 6:00 p.m. That's really annoying. Okay? Start them at or after 6:00 p.m. Food for thought.
Thank you. The next speakers are Ann Greenberg, Vito Signorelli, and Rosalie Grossman. Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Good evening. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Ann Greenberg, and I am a rent-stabilized senior citizen and tenant of Peter Cooper Village. How am I doing? I'm terrified. How are the landlords doing? They've just enjoyed their 12th straight year of increased NOI. How's my landlord doing? They've embarked on multiple MCI projects, major sustainability projects, providing tax breaks. No cash flow problem for them. So why am I terrified? Because my income is pretty much fixed, but my costs aren't. I may never be able to retire. The Consumer Price Index increased 2% in the metro area in 2017, more than the previous year. How's the city doing? Better not ask the 60,000 homeless in our shelters. Better not ask the tenant getting evicted who's heading for the shelter. And better not ask me, because I'm paying 41% of my adjusted gross income to rent. You've done your studies. You've got your PIAC. You've got your RPIE. And these are the numbers, your numbers. Rental income up 3.1%. Total income up 3.1%. Operating costs up 2.4%. Net operating income up by 4.4%. Wish I could get that in my savings account. Plus, income from services and commercial rents was 17.7% of total income in core Manhattan, but inflation-adjusted wages were flat in Q4 2016 through Q3 2017, rising just 0.3%. So while the landlords are pleading poverty, look to your numbers. 1,000 tenants marched last week in Manhattan. Parents walked with their young children. A middle-aged father walked a mile and a half with his Down Syndrome son's arm through his. And I was there too. Why? Because we're all scared. We know that if we lose our homes, we have no place to go. Please vote for a rent freeze. Keep real New Yorkers in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Vito Signorelli.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Many of our arguments have been made throughout these deliberations, but I wanted to take this opportunity to speak before the board one more time. Coming into this year's deliberations, the board has set the lowest guidelines in history over a four-year period, with a meager 2.25% increase for one-year guidelines that have included the first-ever rent freezes. After last year's unjustifiable 1 and 1/4% rent increase in the face of a 6.2% increase in operating costs, the board continues to punish owners who run buildings successfully rather than following this board's mandate and properly compensating owners for their increasing operating costs. This year is no different, as costs have once again increased by 4.5%, and preliminary ranges have been set far below the board's own commensurate ranges. This board has once again used owner profitability as another excuse to avoid approving necessary rent increases. The RGB's fixation on profits ignores thousands of men and women of all races and ethnicities who own small buildings that are not even required to file the income and expense statements upon which the board relies on. We have made the case that NOI is undoubtedly inflated by larger buildings that are given property tax abatements for up to three decades through 421A benefits and other programs. If buildings are relieved from the increasing tax burden, there is no doubt that rental profits appear larger than they really are. What's ignored are the smaller buildings that are suffocated by property taxes that have increased 31% since Mayor de Blasio took office in 2014. With an average yearly property tax increase of 6%, rent increases have averaged an increase of only 0.6%. Aside from other operating costs, the property tax burden alone has put a stranglehold on these owners. These buildings are predominantly rent-stabilized owners, left with no avenue for profit to maintain their buildings. The board continues to argue that owners find ways to earn profits, but that information is skewed considering the sample of larger buildings this board considers, rather than the smaller buildings that are predominantly rent-stabilized. Until this board takes into consideration the challenges faced by the small mom-and-pop owners, you will never be able to truly gauge difficulties that are faced as rents are historically low and operating costs continue to skyrocket. It is obvious that this board is not sympathetic to property owners. However, if you really want to help these tenants you are trying to protect, you must understand that tenants will ultimately suffer, as inadequate rent increases cut off owner ability to maintain and repair their buildings. If this continues, deteriorating housing conditions will ensue. For owners who have developed relationship with their tenants...
Excuse me, your time is up. Can you wrap it up?
Yes. With their tenants and enjoying owning their buildings, it will ultimately become a lose-lose situation for everybody. It is due time for this board to reverse course for the undercompensation, and we ask for an end to reasonable rent guideline increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosalie Grossman.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. My name is Rosalie Grossman. I'm a member of the Metropolitan Council on Housing, and I'd like to talk to you today about history. Each of us has a unique history, and of course, depending on age, some of us have a longer history than others. Well, it occurs to me that all rent-stabilized apartments in New York City have a history beginning in 1974, when the current rent stabilization system was established. Regardless of who has lived in each apartment over these years, the rent increases have been piling up year after year. Each new tenant inherits all of the increases that came before, including all RGB increases, MCIs, IAIs, poor taxes, fuel surcharges, and the dreaded 20% vacancy bonus. My experience is typical. It happens that I moved into my apartment in late 1974. So I have lived all of these increases myself in one apartment. My rent history includes the highest increase of 10% in the 1980s. In 2008, the RGB set the increase for a two-year lease at 8 and 1/2%, but decided that was not high enough for those of us who had been in our apartments for over six years. So they decided to charge an additional amount, so that our increase was at least $85 a month. They called this a minimum base increase, but tenants called it a poor tax. In 1987 and 2004, our building had MCIs for new windows and then a new boiler. They calculated that the cost of the boiler to be $16 a month for my apartment for seven years. However, it's been 14 years, and I'm still paying for it. The landlords complain that their incomes are not high enough, but according to the latest RGB report, their incomes have increased for the 12th consecutive year. I know that you, members of the RGB, are not responsible for all of these charges mentioned, but please consider that when you make your decision about the increases for this year, they will be added on all of these charges from the past and will be compounded by future decisions. I ask you to vote for rent freeze this year on both one- and two-year leases, so that the rent-stabilized tenants of New York City, of whom more than 50% are rent-burdened, will not lose their homes. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Hal Dorfman, John Mayer, and Ann Corchut. Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. My mother always told me to wear clean undergarments as not to...
You're going to need to speak closer to the microphone.
My mother always told me to wear clean undergarments as not to repulse the nurse if I ever go to the hospital. If I have your attention, this board needs to grant a 4% one-year increase and a 6% two-year increase. My name is Hal Dorfman. I am a real New York property owner of an eight-family rent-stabilized building in the Bronx. I grew up in East New York. My building was purchased four years ago with the expectation that this board would grant a minimum 2% yearly increases. I took out a mortgage on it with the understanding that the board grants owners increase that allows us to maintain our buildings and make a small profit. It is the duty of this board by law that rent increases are in line with the cost of operating rental houses, while I provide a public good as mandated by this rent stabilization program of over 50 years. Now, four years later, with only a total of a 4 and 1/4% rent increase, I will be behind the eight ball when my mortgage resets. You ask, during these four years, just three items, fuel, oil, insurance, and real estate tax have increased on my expense item over 25%. Compare the increase of a total of $13,000 over four years, that's over $1,600 a unit, to the $310 increase I've been granted on a... to the $310 increase I've been granted on an $840 apartment. I either lose the $1,300 over the years or I come up with that money out of my other income. This board was not created to provide a private public service. I throw myself at the mercy of this board to grant to thousands of small property owners in this city a 4% increase on one-year leases and a 6% increase on two-year leases, because the last four years have been a burden on my fellow landlords and myself that we have to carry this load. Fair rent increases must be granted. This message to the politicians and tenants is that the rent control lobby must end. It is only for people who are truly in need, and I strongly suggest you adhere to my request of 4 and 6%. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. John Mayer. Good evening, thank you for coming in.
Good evening, chairperson, members of the board. Good evening, hi, I'm John Marr, I'm an attorney, and I maintain a housing justice practice representing tenants. I'm here to tell you that some of the data you use and consider tonight is unreliable and completed based on a selection bias in favor of small landlords, a sampling of which is not representative of the large portfolio and hedge fund landlords who are having most of the apartments in this city in their portfolio. This data is not a basis for responsible housing policy. I've also submitted a separate written statement before you showing that certain landlords who have testified... I will submit that, showing that certain landlords have testified have misrepresented the facts and it themselves not a representative sampling. So what do the RGB's own reports indicate? Questionable data. The data used is based upon landlord self-reported figures, and it's self-suspect because it is not audited and fails to account for public tax holiday incentives such as J51, 421A, 421G, where the landlord essentially receives a tax break in exchange for doing routine maintenance. How about the ROI, the return on investment? The RGB's own report indicates that New York City landlords achieved a 41.7% rate of return on investment, or ROI as it's called, from all residential rent paid by tenants over this period. This number is based on the landlord's own figures and is likely to be much higher, because they're probably reporting lower numbers in order to minimize tax consequences. My point, 47% return on investment is obscene, and in a regulated system, landlords do not need another increase to bring it up to 51% this year. Thank you. POI during this period, the RGB Price Index of Operating Costs, PIOC, has actually decreased relative to inflationary pressure. This means it is actually easier for landlords to make their ROI and can do so at a faster rate. Precarity, an estimated 37% of rent-stabilized households are already paying more than the federal affordability standard of 30% of household income. That's in the RGB's own 2017 Income and Expenses Report. They don't need an increase to make it even harder, where the data fails to market analysis. Even legitimate use of J51s is irrational. Pervasive use gives a tax break to the richest taxpayers, the 1%. These people do not need a further rent increase to maintain a profit.
Excuse me, your time's up, could you wrap it up, please?
Sorry?
Your time is up, if you could wrap it up, please.
Thank you very much, thank you all.
Thank you. Ann Korchak.
Good evening, thank you for coming in. Okay, thank you for giving me this chance to speak. Good afternoon, my name is Ann Korchak. The Korchak family has owned two small buildings on the Upper West Side for three generations. I hope that in the two minutes I'm given to speak, you can understand some of the challenges a small landlord is facing today in New York City. Our buildings are both over 100 years old, so the major repairs and capital improvements are never ending. Just a few weeks ago, a water line to the building failed, and it cost us $30,000 to repair the domestic water line, the sprinkler line, and all the related sidewalk and street repairs. Property taxes are continuing to rise at an alarming rate. 10 years ago, our taxes for each building were about $40,000. In 2017, that number was $70,000. In 2011, we repointed one of the buildings at a total cost of $50,000. This year, a similar job in the other building is going to cost us in excess of $175,000. Associated legal fees and engineering fees is going to cost another $30,000. Financial challenges are not the only issues that make running our business difficult. Now we deal with tenants using Airbnb to rent out their apartments while making more money as Airbnb host than they do in monthly rent. One of our tenants owns a vacation home. This is a rent-controlled tenant. She pays us $10,000 a year in rent for a one-bedroom, garden-level apartment between Central Park West and Columbus. She owns a beach home in East Hampton that she has listed for rent for $38,000 this summer. That's three times what she's paying in rent. I don't believe that rent control was created to let wealthy East Hampton homeowners live cheaply in New York City. Clearly, there are cases where the system is broken. You know, rent control wasn't created to help a woman like that. So I'd like to thank you for your attention, and I hope that the statements you hear from other small owners like my family will move you to give us the increase we need so we can provide decent housing in New York.
Thank you. The next speaker is Councilmember Keith Powers.
Thank you, thank you so much for having me. Good evening, good afternoon, and thank you to Rent Guidelines Board. Before I start, I want to thank my own constituents and the members and my tenants association of Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper, I think one of the greatest tenants associations in the city for being here and for advocating on behalf of our community, but also on behalf of New Yorkers, that the work that they do is really emblematic of the work that we're doing happening throughout the city. So thank you for giving the opportunity to testify. The district I represent, as I noted, is comprised of Stuyvesant Town, Peter Cooper Village, on 14th Street near the river, but extends as far west as Columbus Circle and as far north as 98th Street and 5th Avenue. It represents contained vastly different populations, but they all have a great need for more affordable housing in New York City right now. The tenants of my district and across New York City are in desperate need of relief. I respectfully requesting and joining many of the advocates here today to ask for a 0% increase on one- or two-year leases. I have been here in past years, standing with the tenants and before this board, and you've listened to us, and when you've taken us up on a rent freeze, that not only helps struggling tenants remain in their apartments, but it strengthens the rent stabilization system that many of us feel is constantly under attack. Recommending a 2.75% increase, as indicated in the preliminary vote, could continue to have long-term consequences for affordable housing in New York City, including the ones out of my family and the folks that live in Stuyvesant Town, Peter Cooper, and throughout Manhattan. The rent report, the guide report that you put out, Changes to the Rent-Stabilized Housing Stock in NYC in 2017, noted that there was a gain of 4,387 units citywide. While that's, I think, indisputable, it does not quite, I think, to me, lay out the full picture of what's happening here in Manhattan, which contains only 20% of the units added, but accounts for 56% of the units lost. Conversely, Brooklyn received 56% of the stabilized units while losing only 21% of the units subtracted last year. I'll stop there, I'll just ad lib a little bit, which is to say that for many of us who have been... I grew up in a rent-stabilized apartment, and for many of us in the neighborhoods throughout New York City, it has been assault, it's been under assault for decades. It has, we have lived through very high rent increases. We have lived through constant loopholes that have been exploited by people that own the properties that we live in to get people out of rent regulation. The stories that we hear that are being told today about people having vacation homes and things like that, I don't think really tells the story about rent regulation and who it helps in New York City and the demand and the need for continued protections in it right now. Any rent increase recommended today or by the Rent Guidelines Board on an annual basis is compounded by perpetual payments by tenants for major capital improvements, MCI's, an issue that I and many have asked for Albany for relief on, to end the ongoing and perpetual onslaught of MCI's. When you accumulate the rent increases that are voted on here, plus MCI's, other costs to tenants, the cost of living in Manhattan is becoming far out of reach for many families who look at this as a home to raise their kids and to build a future. So I, again, respectfully ask for you to reconsider the lowest possible increase. I am asking for a 0%, but no matter what you do, the lowest available increase. And while we have so many different neighborhoods represented today, we all, I think many of the tenants here stand for one goal, which is to keep their families here, to continue to keep the rents low, and to look at New York City as not a haven for the wealthiest people in New York City. Some might even represent, but to make it, to continue to be an affordable place to live. So thank you for the opportunity to testify here today, and respectfully request the lowest available number, which to me is 0%. Thank you.
Thank you. It suggests that I explain that when we have a public speaker, someone who's a member of the Assembly, a member of the Senate, a member of the City Council, we give them a little bit of extra time because they obviously represent a large constituency. So that's why we weren't running the clock when we had the council members speaking. But back to the speakers, the next speakers will be Larry Wood, Doreen Alderman, and Kathleen Wakem. Good evening, thank you for coming in.
Thank you. There is some material being distributed, so just bear with me one second.
All right, and if you could speak closer to the microphone, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Well, I guess I can start. I just want to thank the board for their preliminary vote on behalf of SRO tenants. It's the right thing to do to continue the rent freeze that SRO tenants have earned. David had asked me about where we got information about the illegal hotels out within the city. So I brought the executive summaries for two reports documenting the number of illegal hotels around the city. One was done actually in 1993 by some urban planners, Jill Hamburg and others. Those urban planners, also with a fellow named Walter Thabbitt, has been calling for new SRO construction and changing the laws that allow for private landlords to convert SROs. There's more, as I said, there's more illegal SROs in this city than are legal ones left, and many could be brought up to code and legalized if the law permitted it. So that's just some of the background material in that regard. The other thing I brought, Scott has chided me on bringing old samples of very profitable brownstones and rooming houses. So I found a new one, it was just a listing from East Harlem. It shows a 58% return in this particular building. If you look at the rent roll, the net operating income after expenses is incredible. And this is not untypical. The SROs are very profitable buildings, and they have been for quite some time. And I guess I just want to close, I guess it was the first time in years we actually had an SRO owner came before the panel back in April, and he said, "How do you expect any SRO owners to continue to rent to stabilize tenants if we don't grant increases?" I talked to him afterwards, and he acknowledged that those trends, the renting to non-stabilized tenants preceded these zeros and the provisos. The whole reason the board started granting zero increases or increases with a proviso was because we documented how profitable these buildings were, and they were being adequately compensated, so they didn't need to increase the rents on those remaining SRO tenants. So I just wanted to correct the record in terms of what he had specifically said.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if any of you want the full report, particularly, I think David's not here today, but if he wants the full report, I can present it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Doreen Alderman.
I was born and raised in Queens, and I inherited three buildings in the East Village from my father who passed away in 2007. One of my daughters was born in New York City, and my grandson goes to school in the East Village. We are owner-occupied buildings. My father was a postman who had the vision to invest in New York real estate in the 1970s at a time when no one else was. It was his dream to pass the legacy on to his family. I'm his surviving daughter. It is my dream to pass the family business on to my daughters and my grandson. The buildings rage and age from 96 to 116 years. They need care, which costs a lot of money. I depend on reasonable rent increases to keep good living conditions for the tenants. As our taxes, maintenance, water, and insurance continue to increase, rents have only gone up 2.25% over the last four years, which include two rent freezes. I've been forced to sell other properties my father purchased in Florida, Chinatown, Washington Heights, and Long Island City in order to keep up with the expenses of the buildings. I recently replaced the gas lines and meters in two of the buildings at my expense, costing $123,375, and that was just the plumber. I cannot continue to keep the buildings in good standing if the rents are not reasonably raised. RSA recommends at least 4% for one-year leases and 7% for two-year leases. For both the tenants and the owners, this is a fair assessment. I want to keep these beautiful buildings as part of the history of the city and is also part of my family history. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathleen Wakem.
Good evening, thank you for coming in. Oh, good evening. My name is Kathleen Wakem. As a rent-stabilized tenant for over 40 years, I have experienced the attempts by landlords to increase profits by raising rents in various ways while tenants struggle to pay the rent. Since 1980, fuel pass-alongs, poor taxes, MCI's, IAIs, and other fees are added to rents. MCI's, IAIs, and fuel pass-alongs are never rescinded, despite the cost of the appliance paid or the price of fuel decreased. We had poor taxes of $40 and $85 in different years. These are the reasons that tenants are rent burdened. In my neighborhood, Community Board 3 in Lower Manhattan, the median household income is $42,268. Over 50% of my neighbors who live there are rent burdened. The recent RGB studies state that tenants' incomes have remained stagnant for the fourth consecutive year, while landlords' profits are 43%. This is a 4.4 increase. By the time a tenant is eligible for SCRI or DRI, the rent is unaffordable. These programs freeze rents, they do not roll back rents. So the tenant either continues working despite physical ailments or reduces expenditures for necessities such as medications. Many are among the more than 60,000 homeless people in the city. Over 250,000 evictions are due to non-payment of rent. Also, young people stay with parents or have multiple roommates because they cannot afford the rent. A recent NYU-Firman study reported that the average rent increase is 400 when an apartment is vacated. And the average stabilized rent is $2,285. A rent freeze for one- and two-year leases is needed to preserve our homes and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Alan Firestein, Faith Steinberg, and Brian Leckowitz. Good evening, thank you for coming in.
Thank you. You have to think about lofts. I bought my loft building in 1981 to preserve my recording studio, which I built myself. I have three inherited rent-stabilized tenants. They pay an average rent of $1,496. Four years ago, $1,415. 5.7% total over four years. 5.7% total over four years. My real estate tax over that same time has increased 20.3%, 33.9% if you add to the fifth year. One of my tenants inherited a house in another state. She doesn't get any rent increases because she's got SCRI. She hasn't had them for years. So, any increases you give will not go to her. Another one bought a house upstate and bought a brand-new SUV to go to that house upstate. He pays $1,255. Each loft is 2,000 square feet. There's one person living in one, one person living in the other, two people living in the third. I have all kinds of expenses you don't know about, like terrorism insurance, fixing my sidewalk so it doesn't leak into the vault. My insurance company insists that I put fire extinguishers on every floor in the stairwell. Sounds good, right? But it's a fully sprinkled stairwell, fully sprinkled building. So, my tenants are encouraged now to stay there, die of smoke inhalation, trying to put out a fire. That doesn't make sense, but the insurance company is trying to put it on me as the property owner. I don't want you to do the same thing because it's not fair with the insurance company, not fair with you. Loft tenants have not been paying their fair share. Please remember plights of small buildings like myself downtown SoHo, NoHo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Faith Steinberg.
Good afternoon. What's happening in DC
Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Is the culmination of what's happening in our city and around the country.
Can you speak closer to the microphone?
Resulting in a real estate magnet ruining, I mean, running our country with a system that is gratuitously cruel. I truly fail to understand why a city and a country so prosperous cannot share in the prosperity and won't see to it that people can simply live decently, earn a proper living, and live in livable homes. Are these real estate people suffering from male anal retention and must hold on to their superfluous profits? The man in DC sure looks like it. In our many prior years, landlords in our city raked in obscene profits below at the expense of low-income tenants. For example, 18% to 20% increases on new leases, close to 9% increases on two-year leases, causing hardships and worse evictions. Plus, vacancy decontrol diminishing our affordable housing stock. On the Upper West Side, where I have lived for over 40 years, as well as in the rest of the city and the country, luxury condos are being built, and overseas investors are buying them while we have homeless people sitting on our streets begging for change. I believe in the profit motive, but that is very different from greed and gouging, which is the prevailing modus operandi, and it looks like it'll be the end of our experiment in democracy. Read Kevin Baker's The Death of an American City and The Current Harper's. There should be no increases in rent now in case the landlords are truly in need, and that should be handled by our government. You are being given an opportunity to show that you are truly human beings and not obscene money-hungry grubbers. Make 2018 a friend reads year. Housing is a basic necessity of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Leckowitz.
Dear board members. My name is Brian.
Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. My name is Brian Leckowitz. Up until six years ago, I worked in the giftware industry as a product developer. I traveled the world to many factories to develop products for my family's business. Then, I became very sick, and I was diagnosed with severe form of Crohn's disease and ulcer of colitis, and it made it impossible for me to continue traveling the world. But I needed to quickly come up with a new line of work so that I could feed my family of five kids and go give them schooling. So, I turned to this industry. I had some hard-earned money that I put away, got myself some of my friends who partnered up with me, and bought a few buildings, started managing them, had help of friends, had them run them. I use the same motto as my father taught me and has worked for me in the past, business experiences, be honest, nice, fair, and understanding. As I joined the industry, I had a rude awakening. I suddenly found myself in an industry where me as a property manager was being persecuted, and yes, by no other than the city. Landlords are categorized as bad people, no matter what we did. I suddenly learned that in our precious city of New York, where we thrive on not judging certain cultures and ethnicities based on bad actions of a few people without ethnicity or culture, landlords are exempt. Based on the bad actions of a few landlords, a whole group of hard-working landlords who are honest, fair, and humane are being thrown under the bus. I asked from this board and everybody else who could help, whoever else is trying to wage this war against us, please stop. Stop using us as a platform to win an election. Rather, let's work together to truly help fellow New Yorkers with the housing crisis. I hope the city by now has realized that there's nobody better than the private sector to help New York tenants. We all know two weeks ago what the court ruling came out with NYCHA Housing. Please walk into our buildings and walk into NYCHA buildings. Our buildings are by far older than all the NYCHA buildings, and look how we keep our buildings, and look how NYCHA keeps their buildings. And I ask the board to understand, the workload is tremendous. Keeping up these buildings are tremendous. I work six days a week, 15 hours a day. A tenant could call me to my phone six days a week, 24 hours a day. These buildings require non-stop maintenance. So, in addition to the facts of the cost running up, my private life costs are going up tremendously too, and I should be awarded for this hard work that we have to put in.
Excuse me, your time is up. Could you wrap up your testimony?
I would like to finish it up. I would like to invite anybody of you to please join me for one day tour in the Bronx, see our workload. I would appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speakers are Ann Cunningham, Marietta Hawkes, and Richard Steiger.
Good afternoon. Madam Chair, members of the Rent Guidelines Board, and all present. My name is Ann Cunningham. I am a residential hotel tenant for over 35 years, and I've testified before the Rent Guidelines Board during my whole testimony. Today, I am testifying on behalf of the Tempo Hotel tenants, formerly the Commander Hotel, which is now owned by Aimco and has been downsized to 201 units. Total units, of which only about 60 or 63, are occupied by statutory permanent rent-stabilized hotel tenants. Many of the tenants are ably, disabled, unemployed, and low-income. My testimony today explains more, and is signed by 45 tenants. The landlord of my residential hotel and other SRO landlords are doing quite well with market rate rents of units in my building. Kindly note, a certificate of non-harassment from HPD was denied for the Tempo Hotel. Thank you very much for considering the plight of New York City's remaining residential hotel and SRO tenants and for not voting to approve an unwarranted rent increase, which of course that rent increase would prevent further homelessness. Thank you today.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you, R G B, for listening to my testimony today. My name is Marietta Hawkes, and I represent senior tenants in Stuyvesant Town who are disabled and too frail to testify today. I also represent singles and families living in Stuyvesant Town, which we call home. We urge you to vote a rent freeze today because we are struggling to pay Stuyvesant Town rents because of increased MCI's. In one year, we had three MCI's, which we pay forever, windows, facade, pavement, intercom, et cetera. The landlord is making big profits on these MCI's and vacancy allowances. On March 8, 2018, the R G B released its 2018 I E N E study showing how landlords' profits have increased to an all-time high. The landlord's operating income has risen to astonishing 41.7% for every, each dollar. No other industry has remotely comparable this profit margin. My expenses. I am single. I live in Stuyvesant 40 years. Although I'm on SCRI, 45% of my income is to rent. My first priority is to pay the rent. I have two senior cats, elderly. I can't afford their rent bills, veterinarian bills. I can't go to physical therapy because of the co-pays. I can't have cable. I printed out this testimony today at the Sage Community Center and Senior Planet, which I go there often to escape the heat. I have trouble breathing, and I have to sleep in a recliner at night because I can't afford the air conditioning. New Yorkers need vacancy decontrol. I can remember over 10 years ago, we went to Albany, tenants fighting for rent regulation. We were there till midnight, and then they had the tenants over a barrel. It was either install, vacancy decontrol, and that's what happened. It's been a disaster ever since. And I just want to share one incident. I had a best friend. Her name was Ronnie. She was smothered by her roommate. This is how dangerous it is for seniors today, living in a housing crisis. And the director of the senior center warned us, "Be careful who you invite to your home." And Ronnie was to life. And another memorable experience was on Thursday, June 4.
Excuse me, your time is up. Could you wind up your testimony, please?
Okay. Please vote a rent freeze today. Thank you.
Thanks very much.